I declare the citizens of the United States of America and consider the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That would be me? Yes. Mayor's theme.
Mayor, or, here.
No dagger really throws a guy off, doesn't it?
Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Councilmember Enright.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Councilmember Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Helly.
Present.
Councilmember Hagan. Councilmember at large Anderson.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have in addition to the agenda with that addition, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion approving the minutes from August 20th, 2018. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number three is a, it's a proclamation for welcoming week, but it's up on my desk. And can we?
There's a copy in the pack.
Why don't we work on that while we?
We got it.
We got it.
Thanks, Ken.
It doesn't have to be the official one when I read it off.
It is the one.
It's official once you read it.
Yeah. Whereas our community's success depends on making sure that all residents feel welcome here. Today, new residents are a vital part of our community, bringing fresh perspectives and new ideas, starting businesses, and contributing to the vibrant diversity that we all value. And whereas, beginning next week, we honor the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together in Austin. During welcoming week, I invite all residents of Austin to join this movement of communities nationwide by renewing our commitment to our core American values and by taking action in the spirit of welcoming. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and make our community the kind of place where diverse people from around the world feel valued and want to put down roots. And whereas regardless of where we were born, where born, or what we look like, we are residents united in our efforts to build a stronger Austin. By recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and a growing economy, we make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to all who call it home. And whereas let us come together to build communities where every resident has the opportunity to contribute his or her best. Let us come together to create more, to create more prosperous communities and to reaffirm that Austin stands as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. And whereas Austin will commemorate welcoming week 2018 with several local events, including a welcome center sponsored dinner, an ethnic business tour, a presentation from rivaled students and faculty on their American journey, formal institute tours, and an adult learning open house. Now therefore, I, Thomas S. Team, Mayor of the City of Austin, do hereby proclaim September 14th through September 23rd, 2018, as welcoming week. So this is what our second or third year? Jason's not here, is he?
No.
Okay. So, go out and I'm gonna check into that dinner if it sounds like it might be something to go to. So, with that, we can move on to number four. We need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Under public hearings, number five is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Lakeside Products LLC, Linda and Marshall Halverson.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor. Members, 2412 10th Avenue Southwest. This is an infill development, so that's kind of encouraging to see that on this project. Estimated project cost of $200,000 and meets all conformance to the council adopted policy. So council action is requested to approve, and this is a public hearing.
Counsel, you have any questions or comments? If not, it's a public hearing. Is there any, is the Halversons here? Okay, sometimes they come, sometimes they don't. Does anybody here that came to, wants to speak on this issue? If not, we need a resolution to approve or deny. So move the approval. Is there a second? Um, Anne?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Well, the resolution passes six to zero.
Thank you. Number six is another resolution reviewing a tax abatement application for Bigelow and Lennon Construction, 1306 20th Street Northeast. Once again, counsel, do you have anything? Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to the counsel on this issue? If not, we need a resolution to approve or deny.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Kiesel.
Um, councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Uh, councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Uh, resolution passes six to zero.
Okay, what is, oh, there's a, how come the address is different on this one?
Uh, we have two, actually two spec buildings from Bigelow and Lennon, so.
Okay, so it's just the same building, it's the same owner?
Same owner, yeah, different lot.
Same thing. Uh, it's a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Bigelow and Lennon Construction, 1402 20th Street Northeast. Counsel, anything? If not, does anybody here wish to speak to the counsel on it? If not, we need a resolution to approve or deny.
So moved.
Is there a second? To approve, right. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Ms. Kiesel.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
And councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
It's a good thing.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you. Number eight, under bid opening and awards, is a, will be a motion for receiving bids for Baldwin lift station removal. Mr. Lang?
Yes, in this case, we talked about this at the last work session. Uh, this is a lift station project that we took bids on, uh, summer. It's not necessarily the prime time for taking bids, and the bids came in higher than expected with a low number of bidders. So, uh, we would recommend rejecting the bids at this time. We'll rework the project this winter and rebid it during normal bidding climate to try to get better bids for 2019 construction.
Counsel, if there's nothing, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Under petitions and requests, nine is a motion authorizing the yard waste program for 2018, scheduled for September 15th through November 25th. Steven?
Uh, we do this each year. This has been a very successful program for the community, collecting leaves. Uh, residents collect their leaves and then drop them off at a central disposal location, which we've identified as the Cook Farm Site. Uh, at the site, we recommend having hours available for drop-off from September 15th through November 25th. It would be open seven days a week from dawn until dusk. We accept leaves, grass, and plants and garden flowers. Uh, compost from the previous year is also typically available, first come, first served to residents if they want to pick some of that up for their gardens. Uh, but we do not allow branches, so please do not bring branches out to that site. Just creates additional work for our staff to pick those up. Also, we ask that, uh, people dump out any bags that they have. We have garbage cans available to put any plastic bags in. Again, any of those things that are not biodegradable, we do not want mixed in with the leaf collection piles. Uh, revenue from this, uh, we, we do some advertising for this with, uh, the, with Moore County through their recycling program, so there is some costs associated with this. It comes out of our transfer station budget.
Do they ever run out of compost?
Yeah, yeah, we use it. Park and Rec uses it throughout the course of the year for some of their projects. We use it for street department projects throughout the summer. And then we also have a spot for residents to pick it up throughout the summer. So yeah, it's pretty frequently that we do run out, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Lang, has the Cook Farm Site recently been renamed? By any chance?
Creekside Business Park, excuse me, formerly known as the Cook.
Thank you. Wouldn't want to confuse anybody.
I recognize Cook. I don't even recognize the new name yet. Um, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nine, or ten is a resolution setting a public hearing for October 1st, 2018 for fall assessment. Ms. Kiesel.
Yes, this is for the fall assessments that we do each year, snow, junk, weeds and grass, trees. Um, we have sidewalk, forfeited properties, administrative citations, hazardous housings, and unpaid sewer bills. So, um, we would request we set that public hearing, which for the first council meeting in October, which is October 1st, and we'll send out all the notices and, um, have the notices published in the paper.
Okay.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Kiesel.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you. Eleven is a motion and ordinance reviewing a zoning request for Jim Pleal, OBO Burton J. Pleal Trust. Um, Holly?
Your honor and council members, the, uh, this property is located on 21st Avenue Northwest, north of Walmart. The petitioner is requesting to rezone this property from an R1 single-family residential district to an R2 multi-family residential district, and to amend the future land use plan from park open space to mixed high-density residential neighborhood. This, uh, action has been requested to hopefully facilitate some kind of development of the property. Uh, the property to the west is potentially, uh, going to have a multi-family apartment complex. The Planning Commission, with seven members present, recommends approval of the rezoning request by the following vote, um, seven ayes, zero nays. The findings, facts from the public hearing relating to this recommendation are that the use is compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning, and no significant impacts anticipated with regard to the existing infrastructure and surrounding environment. Do you have any questions?
If there are no questions, we need a motion for preparation of the rezoning ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And there, or, we need an ordinance for adoption and publication of the rezoning ordinance.
Move for adoption and publication of the ordinance?
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Kiesel.
Um, councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes six to zero.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution accepting a volunteer assistance matching fire grant. Chief?
Uh, mayor, council, um, we applied for and received a 50-50 matching grant for $5,000 from the DNR to be used towards the purchase of firefighting turnout gear. Um, the $5,000 on our side will be paid out of existing 2018 budget dollars, and I recommend approval of this grant.
Turnout gear? What did you define that for us real quick?
Uh, firefighting hoods, gloves, coat, pants, helmet, boots.
Everybody has their own personal, okay.
Correct. Everything's made for the firefighter.
Okay, how often do you turn that stuff over?
Uh, a couple years ago, NFPA passed, um, the new standard, and it's 10 years.
Okay.
No matter if it's used or not, 10 years from now.
And ours is 10 years old?
We're in the process of purchasing for the people that we've recently hired.
Okay, just a little better understanding for myself, I guess. Um, okay, counsel, do you have any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Kiesel.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution declaring the property located at 1017 10th Avenue Southwest, a hazardous structure. Ms. Wallace?
Uh, this is just the garage at that location. The property is in, or the garage is in very poor condition, and the property owner has not made any efforts to repair or remove the structure.
Is this rental, or don't we know?
It is a rental property, John Ernst's property.
Okay. Uh, council, any questions? Comments? If not, we need a resolution for thirteen.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Ms. Kiesel.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you. Fourteen is a series of motions, three to be exact, granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location. A, 808 2nd Avenue Northwest, the Clamack Christian Property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 303 3rd Street Southeast, the Ford Property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then finally C, 804 10th Avenue Southwest, the O'Connor Property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fifteen is a resolution accepting bid for group life insurance. Mr. Clark?
Uh, thank you, members. In order to try to be as competitive as possible and get the best rates for both the city and where applicable for employees, we went out and solicited, uh, both group life insurance and long-term disability coverage uh, for the, uh, basic life insurance coverage, a savings of $2,461. Um, we need council action to approve that.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Kiesel.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Thank you. Sixteen is a resolution accepting bid for long-term disability coverage. Mr. Clark?
Uh, similar item here, uh, long-term disability savings of $3,584 that we'd split with employees according to our plan. Um, these policies be effective January 1st. Council action is requested to approve long-term disability coverage.
Anything, counsel? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Kiesel.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, we're basically done with the, uh.
We have one addition.
Oh, that's right, we got an addition. Okay, seventeen, awarding bid for asbestos abatement. This will be Steven?
Yes, we acquired a flood home at 502 6th Avenue Southeast. So we invited three contractors to, uh, place bids for asbestos abatement. Uh, we will do this prior to demolition. Uh, those three contractors, we, we received bids from two of the three, with the low bidder being Safe Air Systems in the amount of $4,700. We would recommend awarding that bid to Safe Air. Uh, funds for this will be paid out of a 50% DNR grant and 50% local auction sales tax.
Counsel, anything? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kiesel.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large Anderson.
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, now we're done basically with our business. Are there any citizens present tonight that wish to address the council on things that aren't on the work session? I mean, we're gonna, we have issues. I think everybody's here for something that's on the work session. Would that be correct? If you're here for something else, come on up and tell us what you're here for. Right up to the, you have to give us your names and your address, and then your business.
My name is Jeremy Reecey. Uh, we have a property that's.
And I'm Amanda Gunderson. Our home address is 31021 890th Avenue, Austin.
Okay.
We have a property that's located on 9th Street Northeast that, um, we had let, two years ago, or two and a half years ago, we had let it go back to a bank through a divorce. But through the process of all of that, um, through 2017 and into 2018, the bank decided they did not want the property. So they actually, as of June, or, yeah, June 27th, gave the property back to us. So we just learned of the property as of June 27th. So, we have bills for mowing and snow removal for that timeframe and back taxes, which we have paid. We paid all the snow removal and the mowing, and we paid the property taxes for 2018 and 17. But there's late charges of $1,625 in just fees that aren't for any labor or anything. It's just fees that kept doubling and doubling.
What were the original fees?
Um, 700.
With, I mean, your total fees, everything without any of the escalators?
$701.60.
How much?
$701.60.
And what are you on late fees?
$1,625 in just fees.
Okay.
They started doubling this year.
You're like savings bonds, I guess.
Yeah.
Evidently, yes. The property, while we had it, we took care of it for even another six months after we gave it back to the bank.
Mm-hmm.
We kept mowing it through that season, just so we didn't have those fees, until attorney told us, "Don't go there anymore. You can't go on that property. You can't touch it. It's the bank's. Don't touch it." So for two years, we never did know anything different. So we had no clue that, you know, even the attorney kept telling us, "These fees aren't yours. They're the bank's. You don't, you won't have to pay them. Just ignore them." Had we known for one minute that those fees were ours, we would just did the work. It's not that hard to do.
And in between it, going between us and the bank, they didn't seal up the property. It's been severely damaged, vandalized. So there was graffiti on the home, which we have, as soon as we found out, we went and painted the graffiti. We've mowed the yard multiple times. We've cut trees. We've boarded windows. We've talked to the neighbors. We've secured the property. But the property needs a lot of work.
Yeah, folks, folks, if I can interject here to, to clear it up a little bit. Uh, you had the property foreclosed, is that right?
They canceled the foreclosure at, when they were gonna do the share sale. They canceled it due to the damage of the house, and they.
They sent, they sent someone to inspect the property.
So, so it, it never was foreclosed?
Correct.
So you never lost title?
No.
So it wasn't your name the whole time?
Correct.
Okay. You know, Craig, I, I've talked to Craig on this, and I know he spoke to you, I believe. And Craig, would you, can you address this for us?
Yeah, I think probably, um, without boring everyone with the story, but I think, uh, as you maybe heard earlier on the agenda, this will be on the October 1st meeting. If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Kiesel, would this be a part of that group?
Um, yes, they came in and paid the snow and the weed removals. So the only thing that would be left for their particular portion would be the administrative citations for the October 1st meeting.
And what, how much is that?
That's the 1,625.
$1,600?
Yes.
So I, I think probably most appropriate that we discuss that when it's on the, um, assessment hearing on the first.
And I guess we were just trying to be proactive and try to settle this all sooner rather than later and not have everything in the newspapers or getting taken care of.
We understand why you have the fees and the rules, if that makes sense. However, we own nine other rental properties, and you've never seen us here for any.
And you won't see us here again.
We have one that's next to, I think, Paul, do you have a, I met you one day. We were painting garage.
On the corner of Forest Street Southwest.
I don't know if you live there, have a friend there, but.
Oh, yeah, no, I have a friend.
Yeah, but we have a, one there too. I mean, that's how we normally keep our properties. That's, that's our level. You even complimented us on it. This, this isn't our level, but we'll bring it back to a great level now.
Mr. Clark has, has given me some information on this, but I don't want to do this now because it's not the hearing. I will ask, so, counsel, if there's anything you wanna, if you have a question right now, we'll, we'll do that, and then we'll have the hearing next meeting.
October 1st.
October 1st. And counsel, I mean, you could probably develop better questions if you do it in a couple weeks, but I mean, if anybody does have a question, I don't want to shoo you out of here without giving them an opportunity to clarify whatever they need. Okay?
I guess I just wanted to say thank you. You are making a good impression by coming forward as soon as you found out about the problem, and you're making a good impression by taking care of the property, paying the fines. So, keep it up. I guess we'll see you in a couple more weeks and talk about it more in depth.
So there are two meetings now, or, not September 17th, but October 1st.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Two or three, it's, yeah, it's two meetings, two or three meetings.
Two.
Two, okay. Yeah, it'll be October 1st, so why don't you come on in, and we'll know exactly why you're here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that want, wants to address the council on anything that's, that we're not gonna be talking about in the work session? Okay, then with that, why don't we start with Paul tonight on reports and recommendations?
I have nothing, your honor.
Laura?
I want to say thank you to the, um, city for sponsoring the city award at the Austin Artworks Festival on the weekend of, um, August 25th and 26th. Um, Janet Anderson and Steve King served as the judges, and they had a very tough call to pick out one, um, artist to award, and ended up, um, choosing a, um, textile artist from St. Louis by the name of Don Tran, and, um.
When are we gonna see that?
October 1st, I think.
October 1st, yes.
Bye.
So yeah, that'll be officially, um, presented then, but thank you, um, to those guys, and, uh, we also get tons of support from, uh, Park and Rec and, um, engineering and, and so forth. So, thank you for helping us with that community event. Um, we could not have been happier with our turnout and, um, the economic impact and so forth from that festival, and I'm just, just almost recovered from all those hours on my feet, so.
Thanks, Laura, again.
Um, I just again, want to follow up as a compliment, uh, you know, all, uh, volunteers and all the people that helped make the Austin Artworks Festival, the 7th Annual Festival, a big success, and we welcomed lots of people from, from across the country. Um, I also just want to note that there's a couple things coming up too, that, um, that at the Historic Paramount Theater this Saturday, there's a, a song, original, uh, songwriter concert called Small Town Songs on Saturday, and, uh, also effective September 8th. Um, the annual, um, Hormal Nature Center collaborates with the Matchbox Children's Theater to do the Halloween warm-up, and it's the 35th annual, and the tickets go on sale at, uh, Super Fresh Produce on September 8th. And the reason that there's one place is people have to buy a ticket for a specific time slot. So you can't just, it's not just like one long show. So, check that out, and thank you.
Kim?
I have nothing, your honor.[1510.02]
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Steve?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Judy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Greg?
Nothing, but we have reports from Brian, Steven, and Julie.
Let's start out with Julie. Brian, who are Julie?
Steven.
Yes, so, a couple things going on this month at the library, just to touch base on. The Harvest Fest is September 15th, from 10 to 1, and the library's just one of the groups that's gonna participate in that, but please come out. There are gonna be some really fun things going on. And then that afternoon, it's also Pirate Day at the library.
Arrgh.
So yes, you can go to Mango, the app, and practice your pirate, and we have the Minnesota Jack Sparrow is gonna come and visit us, so it'll be a lot of fun. Um, yeah, that's all I've got this week.
All right, thank you. Who else? Kim, did you, was that you? Brian?
Yes, Mayor, council, just to remind you, our fourth annual Police Citizens Academy will be starting a week from tonight and run for six consecutive Tuesdays from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30. Currently, we have 15 attending, which is a good number for us to manage, so just wanted to give you an update that we have another good group coming for our Citizens Academy.
All right. Steven?
Just wanted to talk about the weather a little bit. So with the rainfall that's forecasting, they're forecasting about two inches of rain. Public Works Department, along with the police department, will keep an eye on rainfall levels around the city, but normally, if we get about two inches of rain here in Austin, we'll see some ponding in some intersections, likely see some water sitting underneath the railroad underpass or on the east side, things like that, so people need to slow down. But two inches of rain here in Austin won't necessarily bring the river levels up to a flooding level. As everybody knows, it takes rainfall north of the city of Austin, going all the way up to Blooming Prairie, heavy rainfall in that area to raise our river levels here in Austin. So this time of year, with the dry weather that we had earlier in the summer, it's probably gonna take something in excess of four inches to really raise the river levels to an elevation where they could impact properties or, or things that we need to start really keeping a close eye on. So with the two inches that they're projecting, we'll keep an eye on those things, and we'll also keep an eye on the river levels north of us, but that just gives you a little update of where we're at and what tends to impact our community.
Are we pretty saturated right now?
You know, we had a really good dry stretch there in July and through mid-August that, that helped to lower water tables, helped to lower water in those potholes and things like that north of Austin. We have had rain the last three weeks, so it's starting to resaturate things. We're to a point where it can stop raining here at any time now again, and we can get our street reconstruction completed, and farmers can get their crops out.
I just want to say, you guys are doing a very good job on my street. I've been very happy. I see them working all the time. They've been great. It hasn't really, it wasn't near the, what we expected, so even if I, I'm pretty happy, so.
I just have a question. Where can people find out about that Welcome Week proclamation where you said there were a variety of activities? Is that on our, is that gonna be on the city website? Ann?
It can be.
It can be?
Somebody to.
Send you information? So we can ask for information?
Yeah, I'd like to know when the dinner, when, where.
Because it says several events, but it didn't really say what, when, where. So, look, go to this, well, watch the city website, and it'll get posted as soon as we know.
Kim? We can do that at Todd Park, right? We'll talk about that later. Okay, I don't really have anything except that I did work at the art festival, and I'll tell you, it was really fun. People are so enthusiastic, it just kind of rubs off on you, and it was, it was a fun festival. It was, I met a lot of different people, and one lady I talked to came up from Dallas, Texas to see Bottles the Clown. First time she'd been to see him, she, I don't know, she's by herself, obviously, but, you know.
Why is that obvious?
I'm not going with you. She was from Dallas, I didn't mention she was from Dallas, Texas. I mean, that's a long way to go to see a clown, I guess, but that's how enthused people are. I mean, people are very, and she wasn't by herself. There's a lot of enthusiasm there. It's a fun, if you haven't been down to the art festival, go next year, because it really is fun. There's something there for everybody. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn until Monday, December 17th, 2018, at 5:30 in council chambers.
So moved.
Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll just take a short break and meet in the council chamber across the hallway.